I've got file fifty-one. Mayor is not paying us, so he will not be here tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and call our public hearing. The order, this public hearing is in regards to ordinance twenty-two-two-nine-one. They passed on first reading last month. And this ordinance is titled in ordinance number in section eleven subsection Q of the logistics personnel policy. Whereas the town of Livingston provides training to new hires and other employees for certifications or qualifications necessary to perform provisions. Whereas the town of Livingston bears the cost of providing such training and education, but expects a return on the investment from future service from such employees. And it goes on to say, and in the meat of it, I'll summarize a little bit. For time to time, the town of Livingston will provide training to new hires or other employees for necessary certifications or qualifications for a position that an employee does not have upon hiring. Required training provided by the town of Livingston, including but not limited to required training to become a certified police officer, certified firefighter, training to obtain a CDL, training to become Tennessee wastewater and wastewater operator, et cetera, will require two years of completed service with the town of Livingston from the date of the completion of that training program. Down Livingston does not guarantee training, but approval will be determined if discretion is appropriate department head or where based on available budget funds. However, if any employee voluntarily separates from the town of Livingston within two years from the date of completion of the training, the employee will be required to reimburse the town a prorated amount of all costs of the town related to the training over the twenty-four months, or the number of full months short of the two years service required. Prior to the commitment of any such training, each employee receiving such training shall sign an agreement with the town in a form prepared by the town attorney and certified mayor reflecting this agreement to repay. As the statement is passed on first reading, and this is the public hearing related to that ordinance. Anyone here wishing to address this public hearing? If so, make your way to the podium, and please do so.
Mr. Vice Mayor, this seems like a reasonable thing to me. Has there been any resistance to this?
To my knowledge, there's been none. I'll ask the other council members that are present, if they've heard of me.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I understand that the mayor did speak with the department heads, and they were in support of it. I can speak for every individual employee. We've called the public hearing, Mark. Order on that ordinance. Have you heard any resistance?
No.
Okay. None of the rest of the Senate. Last call for anyone who would just speak at the public hearing regarding ordinance We're going to close the public hearing. Call our city council meeting, or you would please stand for prayer and clear. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. City Council, we ask that you would lead, guide, and direct our decisions, and that they might be pleasing unto you. Pray, Father, tonight, that you would reach out and comfort those, especially those who have recently lost loved ones in the path of hurricane destruction and other storm damage, Father. Pray for all those in your nation that are hurting, and leading your people, Father. Pray these things, and your son Jesus, precious man. Amen? Chief Smith, would you please...
Blessed are we to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. This is staying a little earlier, because the mayor is out of town tonight. I don't think we'd be here tonight, so we got to stay easy, always. This is not my normal seat. My normal seat, but not my normal duties. Phyllis, if you would, roll them off.
Arnold Clough.
Present.
Arnold Dale.
Present.
Pastor Mary Watson.
Present.
Arnold Eldon. Arnold Langford.
Present.
Arnold Lanning.
Present.
All places except Arnold.
Before we proceed on, any motion approved amended for last month's meeting? Motion made by Oliver Billender, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Oliver, Leonard, Langford, any discussion? On paper, the motion, I've been almost saying aye.
Aye.
For any additions or deletions to the agenda that's prepared before you?
Excuse me, I'd like to hear it from the chief. He and I has talked about the semis, and we need to be pretty thorough.
Out of nowhere, that would be discussing the semis on Hickory Street. Any other additions or deletions? Any motion to approve the amended agenda? Motion made by Oliver Rixdale, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Oliver Billender. Any other discussion? On paper, the motion, I've been almost saying aye. Motion passed. All right, in old business, we had our public hearing a while ago on ordinance twenty-two-two-nine-one. They passed on first reading. This is in regards to the training of employees and paying for that training, that they will be obligated to repay portions of that training should they leave their position within a twenty-four month period of completion of that training. No one seemed to have heard any resistance, and there was no one speaking to the effect other than Mr. Langford thought it was a valid idea. And so, this time, we'll entertain a motion to pass the second reading.
A move being passed, is there a second?
Motion made by Oliver Clough, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Rixdale, any discussion? All right, does that need to roll call on Phyllis, or is that... All right. All ready with that motion, let me know what say, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. On to new business, number one is downtown revitalization. Pray ever to shoot again, chant again, or others. Thank you.
So I'm going to start by sharing some numbers with you. First number I want to share with you is four hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. That's the amount we got last year with the state shared self-staff revenue generated in the central business district. For a number of years, from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and seventeen, we only averaged two hundred and three thousand, thirty-three thousand dollars a year. In two thousand and eighteen, mostly because of the fire at the One Hundred and Hundred Hardware, we dropped to one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. This, on the twenty-first of September, received a check from the state in the amount of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Substantial increase from previous years, fourteen percent higher than the most we've ever had before, and about a hundred and thirty-one percent higher than that since-year average that I shared with you earlier. To me, that says that the investments that y'all have accrued in the central business district are paying off. We would not be generating the self-staff revenue if our retailers weren't being successful, and obviously they are. The last year number was something that we totally did not expect. That was almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars more than the previous year, and we just continue to improve and improve. So, thank you all for allowing and committing to invest in projects within the central business district that we think are really paying off. The next item I want to discuss with you is a capital budget for the next, what I'm going to call the committee's fiscal year. It's not the city's fiscal year, but it's the committee's fiscal year, because that's when we get the money. I think you have in your package a spreadsheet. So, the committee met a couple of weeks ago, and blessed the budget that you have before you. We're going to start, or we are starting, this season with a fund balance of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Sounds like a lot, but we've had a lot going on. First thing Mr. Phil says, like we said, is grab the money for the loan and set it aside, so that's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. By the way, this will be the next to last, I think, in loan payment that we have to make to the bank on the loan that we took out a number of years ago. So, after two years from now, we'll have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars plus or minus more to spend on the central business district than we currently have on this quarter. So, you see the various items that we have there for solid improvement grant. We've got one more reimbursement to make there as soon as Lindsay Walker, I think, puts up her canopy on South Church Street. She'll be on for it for her reimbursement. We have, obviously, money in there for my continued work for the city as a branch project manager that this will prove actually. We have ongoing maintenance with better loans, an estimate centered around courthouse grounds and some of the maintenance in Central Park, amounting to eight hundred dollars. We continue to have our consultants work on the courthouse project, the T-Dot tax grant, so we've got money in set size with that. We recall that we were successful a few months ago in getting an Appalachian Regional Commission grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. So, we've got money in there for our designers, for us to design, for the city's share of the design there. By the end of the month, excuse me, by the end of the week, we will be applying for a second transportation alternative grant to make improvements on Cedar Street and Little Street between South Church and South Square. Those improvements will be sidewalks on one side, the north side of them, some pedestrian lighting and stormwater improvements as well. So, we have some money in there for the application itself. We'll probably know four, five months from now, if we're successful in that application or not. We also have money in the budget for the design and construction of the dog park, as well as live and living. We've increased the amount of live and living a bit this year over last year. What we found is that quality of the performance that we're getting, and we had thirty-five hundred people at one of them, and about three thousand another of them. They all assessed on some pretty high-power audio equipment that simply makes no sense for us to purchase and install at Central Park. So, we lease those pieces of equipment for each of them, so we increased our budget a bit for that. We have a place over for the LA prong at five thousand dollars. We have some anticipation that there could be a conflict between our construction projects and the prong this year. Not a hundred percent certain, so the mayor and I was having some discussions with the prong committee. It could be very well that we'll be under construction on sidewalk projects on south, excuse me, on East Broad and East Main during the same time with prong. It's also very likely that we could be under construction on courthouse grounds at the same time. So, I think the five thousand is the maximum, could be as low as zero, could be something in between, but we've got a place over there. Christmas in the Country, recall that we got very successful events in Christmas in the Country last year with the riots that we had, and also the ice skating rink. This is basically a replication of what we did last year that was so very successful. We always have a bunch of miscellaneous fees. BMI charges us a little bit of money for advancing the park. We've got licensing fees for the movies, et cetera, et cetera, so you see that out of the way as well. And as we have since the beginning of two thousand and seven, we made the contribution to the Chamber of Commerce that they did reinvest in the central business district. Things like Christmas in the Country are following. I'll fall in the category of expenses that they would have that. So, we end up with a reserve of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And what I would ask for this board tonight is that you approve the budget as it has been presented, and that anything that falls into, that's not included in those first many items that will come out of the reserve or to be determined, we'll bring back to you on an individual basis for your approval of those, and draw those out of the hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So, I would ask that this party make a motion to that.
Mr. Attorney, a motion on the table to approve the budget as presented.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Oliver Langford, is there a second?
Second.
Second to Rixdale, any discussion or questions, Mr. Evans? Any rock on this one, Phyllis?
Arnold Langford.
Yes.
Arnold Dale. Arnold Dale.
Yes.
Pastor Mary Watson.
Yes.
Arnold Eldon.
Yes.
Arnold Clough.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed.
So, one last update would be on there, too, T-Dot grant projects, sidewalks on Main and Broad, as well as improvements to courthouse grounds. We believe that we're within a couple of weeks of getting approval from T-Dot of actually bidding the sidewalk process, authorizing us to bid the sidewalk project. At the same time, we have, we believe that we're within a few weeks of getting approval of the environmental portion of the courthouse square project. It's, this is not a good time of the year to be bidding projects like sidewalks. Get into bad weather, makes no sense at all for contractors have to go on days for such things as that. So, I think it's very likely that we'll be able to bid both of these projects maybe in March, not as a single project, but the two projects at the same time, and then maybe leverage our construction inspection so we can have, use that bias looking at both projects at the same time, and give us a hundred dollars there as well. Still working with the dog park folks, trying to get a date for the ceremonial check, and we don't have that one quite yet, but this tour. I think that's all I have to know.
You want to ask anything, Mr. Evans? I want to applaud y'all's efforts. You thanked us for what we've done. Y'all done the legwork on it, and it's obviously paying off, and please keep up the good work.
I do have one thing I wanted to make you aware of. The Tennessee Main Street Organization has opened up their downtown improvement grant, which is a hundred thousand dollars, and it's a twenty-five percent match. The chamber will be applying for that. Amanda Maynard is handling that grant for us, and we should know whether or not we're successful around mid-November. So, what this would allow our downtown business owners, it's going to allow them to do some improvements on their facades. This is the second kind of grant like this, I believe, that we've received in the last few years. So, it will allow them to be able to do door window replacements, paint awnings, lighting on the front of their store, anything that is facing a road. Nothing at the back of the buildings, just anything to the front. So, this is in our downtown area, so also, we wanted to let the businesses know, since we've tried to get them all at the chamber, we had a couple of meetings, but I did want to publicly announce that we are going to apply for this. So, if there's anyone in the downtown area that is interested, you need to let me know, because I need to add that to the grant information.
When will you know on that? Do you know?
Mid-November.
You may have said that.
Yeah, we have to have it turned in by October fourteenth, and we should know by mid-November. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ray, you have something?
I forgot one item. So, the Appalachian Regional Commission Grant, we have a contract signed by ARC, by the state, and by the city, so we're ready for a kickoff meeting. And so, not yet scheduled specifically, but looking forward, probably the last week in the month, we want to invite the, specifically invite, the owners and tenants along South Church Street, and then the community in general, to attend a sort of an open house gathering of opinions and comments from the citizens with our consultants that are and others, before we actually start the signing. So, we'll record that with Shannon, probably that would be at the chamber, probably somewhere in the, between five and seven o'clock in the afternoon. But our consultants will be here, and we'll be here, and we want to listen to the community as to what they want to see in this project on South Church Street.
Sounds good, thank you. Anything else for downtown revitalization? We'll move on to item number two, Mr. Warren Newback of MTS.
Good evening, board and public. It's nice to be back here. Starting to feel like Livingston might be my second home. To give everyone an update on the recruitment for the police chief, we received six applications. The cutoff date was September thirtieth. So, our next step, our police consultants and myself will screen the six applications and come up with the top three to be invited to our assessment center process. When we come up with the three folks, we'll ask for your approval on the list of three. And then, we have scheduled an assessment center for October twenty-first. This will involve a structured interview where they measure the competencies of the applicant as it relates to the position. We'll also have something like an in-basket memo where it's an exercise to see how they prioritize their time. And the third component would be a simulated press conference to the public, say a mock emergency, how they would handle questions and so forth. Our raters will score. The assessment center will prepare a report. If we turn it over to you, then it's up to the board to proceed from there, to select whoever you desire, or if you want to have the interviews. But our role is to screen and conduct assessment center and prepare a report.
Thank you. Anyone have questions or comments, Mr. Evans?
Oh, yeah, when was the assessment?
It's October twenty-first.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number three is the retail coach, Mr. Kyle Cooper. Hope I put that in your last name.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. Well, thank y'all for having me. Again, my name's Kyle Cooper with the retail coach. Wanted to stop by and give y'all an update on where we stand on the retail recruitment efforts. We're about six months in, really like where we are. I've been in town today hosting two small business workshops. Really what that is, is sifting through a lot of data, giving tips and tricks to local small businesses, you know, throughout, over Cal and Livingston, just trying to give them some data, some information that we see is helpful to the national brands, that's also been helpful for other small businesses throughout the country. been helpful for other small businesses throughout the country. You know, kind of jumping in on where we stand. So we have completed all the data, we've completed all the site profiles, and we've really spent our time with recruiting since I last spoke to y'all. So I'll go through some things, I'm going to keep a lot of these names kind of close to heart, just because, just managing expectations, but we've got some real prospects that we're working here. One is a national sit-down sandwich concept. We're working with their Nashville area franchisee, so he has rights to develop in this market, looking to expand rapidly. He's looking for three-quarters of an acre to an acre. So like I mentioned, a heavy focus of ours so far has been on sites, working with the mayor and Shannon, putting us in touch with locals, us talking them about the possibility of selling if we had a user in place. So that sandwich user is, is hot in the market, and there's a franchisee in place. We're also working with a national coffee concept that has shown interest. There's also a franchisee in place. We've passed along sites to them, just kind of waiting to get some feedback on, you know, kind of where they want to be. Coffee concepts are very, very picky about where they want to locate. They want to have, you know, very high traffic counts, visibility, just because they depend solely on, on that A and traffic there. So working with that coffee concept. We're also working with a national chicken concept as well. We have submitted sites to them historically throughout the years of us retail, doing retail recruitment. This specific concept has always been slow to work with, and that's kind of straightforward with what we're seeing here. We follow up every, you know, two to three weeks, make sure they have everything they need, but on the front end, they told us that they are interested. So, you know, have put a lot of sites in front of them on the front end, just trying to really whittle that down on, on what they're interested in. We're also working with quite a few brokers out of Nashville, too specifically with JLL. So hey, you know, we've, we really haven't put a focus on Livingston in the past, but I think is, is kind of key. I think you've been overlooked a little bit. Like I said, I was in town today. We look at everything through the eyes like a site collector would. There was a ton of traffic, you know, I was really impressed. This is my third visit here since we've kind of been under contract, and everything looks really good. I'm trying to get these guys from Nashville down. They represent a number of concepts. They haven't told me exactly who they would be interested for, for this market, we're kind of on the front end of that. I've passed two or three sites to them, well, I've passed our database of sites to them, they've come back with two or three that they're interested in, and I'm working with those property owners, trying to get an asking price, trying to get a phone call set up with these brokers and those property owners. We're working for, or we're working with a shoe concept that's looking for existing space, roughly six thousand to eight thousand square feet. I met with this specific broker when I was in Austin, Texas, at a retail live event on September first, so earlier this month I met with them. So they're looking at space, looking for space, which is kind of hard to come by. So I'm also working with some developers as well on some specific sites, if we could get the right users committed, LOIs submitted on the front end that kind of fit what this developer would want to do, that he would come in, inspect a building, and kind of put everything together. So that's kind of where things stand. We've got a lot of interest on the front end. About six months into this thing, I really like where we stand, and moving forward, it's going to be more continued focus on retail recruitment. I'm going to be at retail live in Nashville on October twenty-sixth, and really what that is, it's, it's a one-day retail trade show. So retailers and restaurants have booth set up, and it's kind of like speed day. You get two or three minutes to go by and talk to them, market your community. So I'm going to be out there marketing Livingston. I've talked to Shannon about it, the mayor about it, so they might be attending as well. So that's something that we will be at, as well as ICSC Atlanta on October thirteenth and fourteenth, that's near National Council Shopping Center, is their regional show. So there will also be a number of retailers and restaurants at that show that I'll be marketing Livingston to. So that's kind of where we stand, happy to answer any, any questions that y'all might have on the front end.
Do you want to have any questions, Mr. Koper, the Retail Coach? Anything further you need from us at this point than that we could do to?
You know, the mayor, you know, the mayor and Shannon have been great to work with so far. They have provided me everything I needed, probably more, putting me in touch with, you know, the right people, kind of sending out some introductions on the front end so they're aware that I'm reaching out. So, you know, we're extremely happy with where we stand, kind of halfway into this, and, you know, kind of pushing the horn in to get this stuff over the hump, so.
No one else?
Thank y'all.
I appreciate it. Item number four, Upper Compton Electric, Lady Living Endor Terry Merman, this is Piquas.
Well, we're going to find out what's exciting in Livingston, this is the place to be, isn't it? I'm Terry Merman with Upper Compton, Public Relations, Communications, and I'm here with my friend, Member Services Larry Fleming. One of the most important seven principles of our cooperative business model is based on conserve the community. The statewide Cooperative Day of Service is an annual event among cooperatives that encourages community outreach through organized service projects. This is a statewide event. The event gives co-op employees the opportunity to volunteer and serve their communities. In the first five years of the Day of Service event, nineteen-hundred employees have volunteered more than forty-nine hundred hours to complete one hundred sixteen individual projects in co-op communities across the state. Now, projects can be large or small, they can involve a few employees or dozens. At UCEMC, each district was encouraged to develop a project or projects in the service area and complete them during the workday on or around Thursday, October twentieth, and/or Friday, October twenty-first. Now, this is the first year that UCEMC employees have participated in the Day of Service, and we're going all out, especially here in the Livingston District. Our Livingston employees are especially excited about the project they've chosen. UCEMC employees will join forces with city crews to beautify the park walking area around Winningham Nature Park. One hundred percent of the employees in this Livingston District office, twenty-seven volunteers, have signed up to work the entire two days, clearing brush, planting bulbs and flowers, and starting work on better lighting in the area. Our crews will be assisted by Trees LLC, they're volunteering. They're a company with exactly the right equipment and know-how to keep our volunteers moving along. Also volunteering their expertise are the ladies of the Livingston Civic and Garden Club, who will be helping our volunteers design and plant. In addition, the club will be designating the park as an official design project for their members, and they will assist in maintaining and updating the plantings as needed. That is wonderful to use to most of us. This volunteer project is not for the faint of heart, as I have found out, and it does take a village to get anything done. Now, when I announced to the districts that we would participate in the Day of Service, my good friend Larry Fleming immediately targeted this project as one that would benefit the community, and he has worked tirelessly to pull everything together for me. I didn't know where to begin to organize this project, I have to admit, but Larry has led the way to connect the dots and helped me see that it could all come together beautifully, and that it has done so far. Larry's here with me tonight to fill you in on some of the finer details of our project.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is a big project. Really didn't know how big it was until we got started looking at some things to do. When Mr. Terry called me and asked me some projects that we could look at, I did reach out to Ms. Shannon at the Chamber, a lot of other people in the community, and we kept sort of following back to maybe something around the nature park. And we want to make it, I guess, a beautification project. We're going to start on Melvin Drive as you go in towards the new football field, the new football stadium, and we're going to start there on the corner. We're going to try for two days to remove all the brush, everything that we can down the main highway, so we can see clear, clearly through to the other side, get all that light. We're going to leave a few trees that, that are, I think, prominent to the area. It is a nature park, so we want to do the least we can to disturb anything there. Mr. Michael Hayes and I went by today and marked a lot of trees to leave, and Mr. Kristen has been working with us to get, get some items going too. So hopefully we can do everything we want in two days. We do that a hundred percent, like Mr. Terry said, all of our guys, we have, we have all the equipment, the saws, pole saws. Our right-of-way contractors LLC has volunteered a full day to lift us, they're going to give us a full day. So we're going to have launchers, we're going to have crews there working tirelessly. We're going to feed everybody, make sure everybody is hydrated and everything. So hopefully we can, we can do a whole lot of cleanup and work there. And we are going to work, the mayor and I have talked, and he is interested in some lighting in some places, and I think we're in a position that we can, we can provide that for, for you all. And we're doing this as a community project. A lot of people use, use the park, I think, as well. I have stopped to talk to several people, ladies that may be pregnant or are struggling with their little one, or older folks, and they are, they are thrilled about us trying to clean that up, so it's not such a hassle, some places you can't see really well. So we just want to make it a, we want to make it a beautiful place for our, for our title and our city. So I don't know what else. Michael, you have anything, Kristen?
Sounds exciting, much appreciated, and like you said, it takes a village. It sounds like we're bringing a village together to get this done. Anybody have questions or comments for Fleming or Mr. Merman, any one?
I'd just like to say that we don't thank Upper Compton because, I mean, you fellows do a great job, I appreciate you so much, and I do know with you fellows taming up with our lunch and everything, it would be very successful. I want to thank you very much.
We appreciate that. We brought it to the mayor and Mr. Dotson a long time ago, and we've been working on it about a month now. It does take a lot of planning, especially when we have this, this many people involved, our contractors and all of our guys, and we just, we thank you for letting us be part of this.
We are needing some rain, hopefully it won't rain on those days, the darts are raining days, so it's not just two days.
We did have some rain day, so we'll get there.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, item number five is property maintenance, Mr. Christian Mansell.
Last Mayor, I'm here, I'm here to report on our property maintenance up through October twenty-two. This is all dealing with our title thirteen property maintenance regulations. Chapter one is our miscellaneous, and to date, we have had two hundred and six properties that are new and violation. Two hundred and two of the properties are in compliance, we have four that are in violation at this time. The property that's listed has stayed on to litigation with errors, has recently been settled, a public tax settlement, and so that should be getting cleaned up in the near future. We have two wins on properties at this time, and five properties have been cleaned up by the city. On our chapter two, which is abandoned, the red dismountable adopted vehicles, twenty-six vehicles have been in violation, and twenty-six vehicles are in compliance. On chapter four, slum clearance, we have fourteen structures, fourteen structures that have been considered slum. Three of these properties are boarded up at this time. Four have been torn down by the owners, and seven of the properties have been restored. And in our chapter five, junkyards, we have had zero property cited in that area.
Thank you, Christian. Anyone have any questions, comments, Chris Mansell?
The building out here on North Church that we boarded up next to the londery, man, I know that you noticed they're doing a lot of work with that, and I ain't even, what's going in there for?
So, so that, that property, they are remodeling that building, they should be sitting trussed any day now, so there'll be two offices in the front, and I believe they are already spoken for, and there, there will be climate-controlled stores in the rear of that building, I think four climate.
Just, just going down the highway, they're maybe looking nice.
I look at this, yeah, it's going, it's going really well out there.
It's going to be super nice, I didn't know what was going on, but somebody doing something?
And then the old co-op, we're looking, we should be seeing a roof for a bit in the near future, so, I don't know, so that's another plus.
Do you have any emails?
All right, thanks, Christian.
Item number six is titled signatures for checks. City policy is that there are two signatures required on all checks coming out of this offices. Myself, the mayor, and Chris Speck were the three that were authorized to do that, and of course, Mr. Speck resigned, and is no longer needed, get a replacement for him, and hopefully be someone nearby and local, so it's easy for the mayor or Phyllis to, to get someone to come and sign a check, and I understand that maybe Mr. Rexdale has been approached and asked if he would do that, and he's willing to, so be, be willing to hear a motion to that effect or any other effect at this time regarding that.
I'll move to that.
Motion made, Alden Clatt, the, and Rexdale is an authorized signer of the County Council's there a second. Second, Alden Billender, any discussion? For that motion, I've gone with saying I opposed, the motion carries. Item number seven is bids on paving. In your packet that you received tonight, there is a list. We have a bid opening today at one o'clock for paving. As you might remember, hopefully you do, we budgeted a thousand, or excuse me, a million dollars from the art fund to be used toward paving. Hope to get a whole lot of those REITs from that million, but as the cost has gone up on things, as everyone's well aware, and the bid that we received today, and then you can see that, that list there with total nine hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars based on the bid that was received, and that bid is an eight-month contract, so it may or may not happen before cold weather gets here and they shut the paving plants down, asphalt plants down, but those would be the streets that are being looked at being paved with that million dollars. We're seeing a motion to approve that list, if anyone's willing to do so.
Whether you're starting.
They're, that's why it's an eight-month contract. They're hoping that they can get started, and that the plants will stay open, that they can do some before bad weather hits and they close the plant down, but the eight month, it may be spring before it actually happens, my understanding.
I have two different lists, one in the general, the twenty-eighth, and then this add-on at twenty-sixth, which is correct. This one, so it's twenty-six streets, not twenty-six.
Twenty-six is correct, and yours, the one, the new one should have a total, a dollar total on it as well.
Correct.
Yes, that's, that's, that's the correct, that is twenty-six is what we're voting to Somebody keep me straight, did we have a motion?
Yeah. Yeah, it matters, going into this specified North Spring Street and South Spring Street, item two and three, both Spring Street to seven, doesn't say north or south, I don't know if that matters for any reason, but.
I'm sure it matters, but I honestly don't know to tell you which, which is which as far as north and south, spring on that, nobody here from the street department. We can get that clarified.
If we get that clarified, I make it my turn to approve those.
Motion made, Alden Rexdale, to approve these twenty-six streets with the clarification of items two and three, designing specifics on Spring Street. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, Alden Billender, any more further discussion regarding this? Don't call on Mr. Evans?
Alden Dale?
Yes.
Last Mayor Dotson?
Yes.
Alden Billender?
Yes.
Alden Klatt?
Yes.
Alden Billender?
Almer DeCler?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed, moving on, I made is an update from the Police Department. Chief Braskin?
Evening, Vice Mayor, Mr. Alden. Just giving you some updates about where the Police Department's been moving to and where we've come from. And the same thing we're really working on with the government, with the department and the community itself, is the ordering and the grant that was applied for and found that we get was found in favor, and also to receive the seven patrol units that we placed on order and got confirmed that that did pass. So, we have been granted to purchase those seven units. They went into production actually today is what I got a little email on. There'd be seven patrol units that are Dodge Chargers, is what we use today and is what have we been buying in the past. They seem to be very feasible for the Police Department, and we get great decent use out of it. Secondary thing, we're still three men short. We're still out there asking for gentlemen and ladies to apply. Three positions for patrol was what we're looking for. Also, and one SRO. We have, we've put it out multiple times, we keep folks to apply, but when we find out, you know, the workload and what takes place, it seems to change some minds of that sale. Secondary thing, we are coming to a close. I'm the most excited thing I've ever seen, as we're coming to a close in our evidence room. I would say by the end, thank goodness, I said by the end of this month, we will be having orders prepared and things to be took care of and to be either gateback or destroyed or sold, one or the other. We also completed a sale that was approved by the board. Some old units, old patrol units, old vehicles that we had on, on hand. Those also cleared through Gov deals, and that's also passed. We have another sale coming up that we're going to apply again and put on Gov deals. We're using that money for the equipment, for the cars and stuff, so it don't put a burden on the city taxpayer. We are, we have several that is entering school. We have some young men and women that's heading out to go to school, become certified in law enforcement. That just don't stop their training from there, they'll come back and also sit back down in the car again and ride several months in the FTO program, whichever they're going into. If they're going into the school system, they will go to the schools and be under interrelated arts coverage, which is a service for the SRO division. Other strides were improvement in training. We're looking forward to a new training session in our end services to see that officers are receiving the proper training to make them better officers down on the street, to better serve the community here and having others training too. Is the escalation training that's been brought up multiple times. We are putting that into our regular training program. We have had great success. We are reaching out to M Task at the end of the round being straight up. We'll reach out to them for another audit. We have been doing regular audits at our department to make sure that we are following the guidelines and proper procedures. Also, we're, we're looking at to redo our procedures as soon as possible of the department, see what is feasible for us and what changes we need to make. And that would come under advisement of M Task themselves.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone have any questions or comments? Chief Braskin?
Good work. I mean, I'm amazed that you're almost done, that's great.
I think there's been a feat that I know we could overcome. We got good men in the Police Department, we got a great support of the board, and we have a great ally with the M Task to help us overcome these situations.
Just stay where you are, Mr. Harland, I think you actually included on the next item as well. Number nine is semi trucks on Hickory Street?
Back years ago, when, when Hickory Springs was in business, all of our trucks went up Main Street and turned there on Meyer Street. They knew to do that. Today's technology with GPS, it allows us to take them down. Muffel Street and the back streets, they get hung up, I get that. But what our drivers and the drivers are running into now, you know, I agree. No, no semi should be on Muffel and on Window Street. But, we used to cut on a busy time of day, back in the Hickory days, Spruce Street.
Yes, it is.
And you can go up there and you can swing right, wide, and make a turn with no problems. What happens in the middle of the day, when you go on up to the mall place on Main Street, cars coming, you take a semi out with a 53-foot trailer, they just can't make a swing. They get into the pole, they have to back up, traffic stops them. And it is really, really a burden. So, I'm just asking if maybe Spruce Street could be open back up to semis, because it would just make it easier entrance. They don't come out that way. 3:00 in the morning, when we go out, there's no traffic, it's no big deal. It's just in the middle of the day, when, when traffic's really heavy off of Main, off of Meyer.
We have, we have looked into it, I have, when I personally observed the trucks trying to make the turn up there, and they're trying to get folks to come off of Meyer Street, come on and give them a little space. Don't really work, and we have that problem of just waiting, it does back up traffic. I don't know how Spruce got the sign. Maybe somebody else does. I don't know if there was a petition through the city ordinance or whatsoever to get that, there's a little sign there.
Name of the department on the board, but I don't want to complicate it, are you, you're talking to one?
So, Vice Mayor, we, I went to there and made some contact with folks. There is two businesses on that little street there. One is closed and got a legal hold. There is a, it's residence, just like a five altogether, if I'm looking at it correct. I did attempt to make contact with those five, did leave a card from the, called me back, said I'd like to know what their input would be on that road. The only one who called back said I didn't know it was ever logged. So, unfortunately, I don't know how that come about. And I, I told these people I'd like to know how it come about and get the input of the community and input of the board on that. I have no objection, because there is room there, it's about a football field length, and it's pretty much, it's not a busy spot. So, I don't see that to be a major problem if the board assumes it is.
Make a motion, we pull the signs, allow the trucks to go around Spruce Street.
Motion on board, pull the signs and allow trucks on Spruce Street. Any hours, any direction? Is there a second to that motion?
They won't go down. I'll say have to guard, okay? Spruce Street, our driver would just be coming in during the afternoon. They know to go to the red light. They live it out, 2:30, I in the morning, but they will go to Main Street and exit. They want to go to Spruce Street.
We have a motion, still looking for a second. Second. Second, Rex Dale, any further discussion regarding the motion? All right, all in favor of the motion as presented, I'd be going to say aye. Can you oppose? I want to sit down. Mr. Commander, I'm saying for both motions, still carries. All right, folks, that gets us to the end of mine, we had to, while entertaining a motion, it will be adjourned.
Move, adjourn.
Second. Motion made, Alden, I'm going to say adjourn, we stand adjourned, thank you. Well done, rookie.
Hey, thank you.